Allahumma ala ruqonka. Ah, takadudza'ga ba'tar. Allah ka la'mu'anta'la khirein. Gabakun onzlasu ga ba'tar. Uma Allah kasafa himta godanda akashiriyadu.
I thank Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala for making us witness this day. Yet another town hall meeting organized by the motorcycle community initiated. It is becoming our tradition to organize these kind of events for which we provide a platform where we can engage in robust discussions, we can share innovative ideas, we can think of ways of developing our communities. It is not a hidden secret that Zamfara has been backwards basically in all indices of development. And we feel by the theme of today's event, we can have, we can engage our elected representatives, elected leaders. We can tell them the needs of our people. They can hear from us as the representative of the downtrodden and they can also hear from the people themselves. The basic needs of the people they are representing, the people who elected them to the positions they occupy. We have in doing so tried to compile a small booklet, we call it a compendium, where we have traveled great distances across Zamfara. We traversed various places and villages and wards and local governments. We discussed with several community leaders and several masses, many masses. We compiled a book of their basic needs where we have articulated the needs of each and every local government, each and every community, each and every ward across the state, which we intend to, we intend to hand over to our representatives and elected leaders. And being a civil society organization ourselves, we intend to monitor implementation of those basic needs that our people are demanding from their leaders. Hopefully, by the time we come here next time again, I may not be the chairman then, but hopefully Zamfara Cycle will be existing and we will have the course to celebrate the progress we've made from where we are today to a certain position of development that Zamfara is yearning for. We will also, Insha'allah, going forward, are planning to organize pre-election debates for our elected representatives or for candidates who are willing, who put themselves forward to represent us. We need to know what they have in place for us. We need to know whether they even know our problems. Because the idea behind doing this is that we know in the course of the electioneering, there were several promises made. We have heard that educational sector will be fixed. We have heard that health sector will be reformed. The economy will be improved and so on and so forth. But it is our firm belief that because due to some reasons, obvious reasons, those candidates were not able to travel to various places in inner resources of the villages we have. So they don't know the extent of the problem we have. So we feel as a civil society organization, it is our duty to bring it to them, to bring it to the fore for them to know the burden they put on themselves and the expectations we have of them. Your Excellency, Chairman of the Occasion, with your permission, I would want to call on our representatives also. Because I can see on the side we actually am at for the State House of Assembly members, basically none of them is present. Of course, we have extended an invitation to them. For me personally, this shows the disrespect our elected leaders have for their constituents. If they are not here, it means they don't respect their constituents. We are here to discuss the problems of their people and they are not here to listen. That is profound disrespect as far as I'm concerned. And we are calling on you, Your Excellency Sir, to take charge, to take lead and mandate these people to make sure that whatever they try to bring forward is not for their personal gain but for their people. And Insha'allah, our civil society organizations will be monitoring, will be calling your attention where necessary and will be commending you where necessary. Thank you very much. Jamaa As-salamu Alaikum. Mu'shade ongeta'aruni sabu de mona agalim kamatu'ur. Hitu de masalulinda ak'mutanem unak'oyukadeno communities. Jomu gudama shuka banimu masalulinda ak'gabosu. De jang ayken de sunkada'uku. Wanda alla dura musu dosi bu kadisusoki wanda na'oyu. Musa ayi kampin ayi yaki nemanzabi. Amma sabu dosu de lillayi. Ba'ku ina shuka banisuka shuka baniman. Te'emu ku banisuka masalulinda nda'ah'oyu. Su mu'mut okisha akankamu chiwa zamushiga ka'oyukanen. Mu'kuma shiga. Mukadzaku lu masalulusu. Mukachacho na'adu suka hota'amu na'bokatu'usu. Wanda suka su akayu shuka banusu. Kumu muka ha'ala le'bu'katuna amasal lecha. Ywanda Insha'allah wamuhanda'nta'm shuka banen. Nandonsu geni susanga abinde kenen. Mu'kuma amasal mona kunyuyi sakayi. Zamuchiga bado'kula wa dedeworogodu mugageri in progress nda'akasamu wanda nang abungadi. Baza'ruhi basina ak'arama gana deni turenchi chiwa shuka banimuda emajali sunda ak'agayatuna jaha. Mu'mba'asu invitation. Nika ina na'ati hi-house kususu ukku ina ruqon tusu chahu'usu. Sorarasa bu de zaa'atato'una masalulusu. Amaga ulinda muka ajemusu babu wande. Wanda yag'udachi wa ba'asu kia otata'ama jam. Wanda suka zatisu. Ba'asu geni imusu ba'asu geni ndalejosu. Inda wande kachi zaa'ati mak'azaka'ema ayiki. Ya bak'ukure'a. Akachi zaa'atato'una masalashi. Kumu bak'ajiba. Tu bak'agirima mashiba. Kumu bak'kia otata mashiba. Su mona fati Insha'allah wanda ngaba. Zaa'achanza wanda trendi. Kumu zaa'usu sursu sorari masalulusu. Masalulimu cha'nu'usu dunia agara. As-salamu Alaikum.
Alright. As my ex-CAB earlier stated, the next one I'll attend to is the first paper presentation, which I would like to use this very medium to invite Professor M.T. Ousmane for his paper presentation. Professor Sir.
Exactly as concerned, the governor has done his side. But then, the others who are supposed to be closer to the people, closer to the grassroots are not here. And I think this is something very worrying, which I think something must be done to address it. Stunghish invite a guest, especially the Ulama, community leaders here present, gentlemen of the press and of course other ordinary, I'm sorry, of the meeting, which is a new Zamfara state towards achieving a people-centered public service. Shows clearly that there is so much dissatisfaction with the situation in Zamfara state. And I think if we give the people the opportunity to participate by telling the leaders what they are supposed to do, it means we have now beginning to address the problems that have been confronting the state. It is from the main theme that the organizers have given me a topic to address. The topic given to me is citizens' participation in governance as a finesse or inclusive development. But then I tried to modify it to read citizens' participation in governance for inclusive development in Zamfara state. Because of the short time allocated for the presentation, I will read through the paper and I think where there is the necessity to explain then I will maybe take few seconds or minutes maybe to explain. Over the years, the development of Zamfara state has been crippled because of various challenges that are socio-economic and political in nature. Most recently heightened insecurity. This no doubt, this meeting no doubt is permitted to come up with workable solutions in order to reverse the trend. It is expected that at the meeting stakeholders will consider strategies for the remaking of Zamfara. We should be looking at the way to remake Zamfara. Because this Zamfara that we are is a new state. So, but it has been facing problems over the years. So it means we have to look at the ways to remake it. The statistics from the national and international organizations, which both the chairman and the chairman of the occasion and chairman of the cycle have made reference to indicate a worsening state of appears as it relates to social and economic development of the state. For instance, both the UNESCO and UBEK reports indicate an increase in the number of out-of-school children from 4,022, 214 in 2020 to a staggering figure of 8,883,953 in 2022. That was as at November. Poverty rate from the reports of UNDP and NPS show that the phenomenon has been on the increase from 73% in 2019 to 78% in 2022. Poverty according to the indices for measurement is not limited to household income alone but also access to quality education, suitable homes, availability of basic infrastructure and services. It is therefore important to say that more participation of the citizens in the appears of the state is one of the ways to promote good governance, which is a crucial requirement for development and better living condition for the people. So what is the significance of public or people's participation in governance? I have enumerated five, which I think are not exhaustive at all. Number one, public participation is supposed to promote transparency and accountability in government. Number two, it is a political empowerment of the people to influence government policies and the actions of the political actors. Number three, it is one of the ways to promote efficiency and delivery of qualitative services by government. Number four, it allows for regular feedback from the people as Ayad stick to assess progress, success and challenges. Number five, it guarantees consistency and continuity of programs and activities of government without politicization. Without politicization. Because this is one of the things that have been affecting governance in this country. Somebody will start a project. The one coming after him will abandon that project no matter the impact that it is going to have on the people. So, the next section talks about the imperative. What are the objectives? This has a significance. This is what we expect. But then if we get it at the end of the day, this is what we expect to get. Promotion of awareness among the people to support and contribute to the success of government policies and programs for development. Number two, people will now take the responsibility of proactively engaging in the promotion of good governance and accountable leadership. Number three, it will now educate the general populace to get better understanding of the nature and types of development challenges, especially in a state like Zamfara. Number four, it will enable the discovery of workable strategies for the promotion of resilience and motivation among the people in order to mitigate the effect of the obstacles and factors on the development of the state. Number five, it will now lead to the, that means the participation by the public in governance. It will now lead to the institutionalization of a systematic engagement with stakeholders which can be statewide in terms of the forum that you get for regular discussion about the development of the state by relevant stakeholders drawn from different sections of the society. The next part discusses about the history of Zamfara before the modern period and what are the lessons that we can learn from the history of the area, which I think if we adopt some of the lessons, we are going to get a change. It is perhaps clear to some of us who are aware of the ancient history of this area that contemporary Zamfara is the new state created in 1996 on the land where old Zamfara kingdom had existed. Ancient Zamfara was one of the prominent kingdoms in Hausland. The old kingdom had a rich history of important social, economic and political achievements that had reached high level by the 17th century as recorded in historical works by eminent scholars such as Garban Adama, A.R.Aubie and our late Mahdi Adam. To mention just a few. Important aspects of the history of Zamfara, of Zamfara kingdom include a spectacular achievement in public administration, efficient management and utilization of resources by the rulers. The old Zamfara was successful in building a state system which attracted migrants from different cultural and linguistic communities. Among them were the Gobirawa, the Polani, Burmawa, Zabarwawa, Baribari, to mention just a few. Some of the migrants as well as autonomous Zamfara'as had engaged in various economic activities which laid the foundation of such activities like crop cultivation, livestock breeding, mining and iron working as well as local manufacturing activities for the material needs of the people. So one can say that it was a self-sustaining society even before the coming of the colonial rulers. The parit kingdom was economically prosperous, politically strong and socially cohesive for several years until the period of political upheavals in the Rimba'bezi where the state was located. It was a rivalry for political supremacy among the dominant states in the region during the 18th century and later the jihad of Usman Ampojo that led to the overthrow of the house of states including Zamfara by the 19th century. During the colonial period Zamfara was attracted to the colonial state which was established by the British following the defeat of the Socrates Caliphate. The British colonial administration was determined to exploit the vast agricultural potentials and deposits of gold and other minerals in Zamfara. Possibly some of us may not know because of lack of knowledge of history that the gold that you see people now are rushing, are now struggling to exploit in this area had become known to the British long time ago and they mobilized their companies and merchants to come and participate in the exploitation. The unfortunate thing is that during that time they excluded Africans. They excluded the indigenous populations. Because part of the requirement for you to participate in mining activities was that you need to have capital and you need to also have technical know-how. And this was the difficult condition that many of our people could not meet and therefore that remained a monopoly in the hands of the British merchants and British companies. The colonial infrastructure, mainly the railway and the highway constructed from Dalia to link to Sow and other important towns like Orana Moda was all done to facilitate economic exploitation. In the post-colonial period, Zamfara area was the industrial hub of north-western state and later on Socrates state. But all this has become now a thing of history which I think must be addressed, which I think must be resolved. So, the next section in the paper addresses the intellectual basis. What are the ideas of scholars? What are the ideas of writers concerning the issue of citizens' participation? Because it's not just something from out of the sky. It has been documented and in this section what I did is to sample the opinion of some modern scholars as well as the scholars of the 19th century Socrates Caliphate. There is no doubt that citizens' participation in governance in terms of their involvement in decision-making relating to government policies and influencing actions of political actors is one of the important elements in governance that should be promoted. The idea of citizens' participation has been discussed in both conventional and Islamic sources by different scholars. Governance is appropriately defined by one renowned writer and I quote, "As a social contract between those in position of authority and the ordinary citizen." And I think this has been stated by both the chairman of the cycle and also my vice chancellor. They have stated this one. It is only when you have a problem like this that people can voice out their grievances, can tell you their needs, can tell you their aspirations and you as somebody who is given that responsibility, you now undergo and pursue whatever they have said. Citizens' or public participation is a form of empowerment and is considered a crucial component in democratic governance. It provides a new model of public administration and policies to encourage citizens' participation in government decision-making process. Participatory governance, as it is called, is therefore a system of government that engages citizens in both voting and deliberation on matters involved in management. It creates an interactive platform between citizens and government. Participatory governance implies that the citizens' participation is a backbone for democracy. Participation provides a platform for an all-inclusive and strengthening democracy. Citizens' involvement can be in different forms. One can be functional like those that you normally elect, a governor and the legislators as well as those appointed by the government. They have specific responsibility to discharge in the ministries, in the forces and so on and so forth. This is the functional participation. And then the interactive, like the one that we are having here. And then the issue of mobilization, which is another one. Like the one initiated by the cycle of Zamfara. Our purpose in this presentation, we will cite most of our examples from the topic of this paper, from the writings also of the Socrates Caliphate. The founding fathers of the Caliphate have treated many issues relating to leadership, public service, public service and administration, public finance and accountability, resource management, official bribery and corruption, nepotism and favoritism, socioeconomic development and the rights of women among others, which are the predominant challenges of governance in the contemporary states and communities in Nigeria. The role of people in governance has clear reference in the Holy Quran where it is emphasized on the issue of imperative of consultation. And I think for those of us who are aware of the history of Islam, we know that that was done by the prophet, peace be upon him, as well as the rightly guided caliphs and even the superlative. For popularism. Usman Ampojo, Usman Bin Pudju has elaborated in his Bayan Ujib Al Hidra the view of one scholar that if a leader seeks the advice of people and is successful, people will praise him while people will suffer the consequences of any error due to lack of consultation by the leader. According to Usman Ampojo, one of the worst qualities of a leader is to be opinionated and neglect consultation. Neglect consultation. The relationship between the leaders and the ordinary populace in terms of the obligations and responsibility of each other have also been felt out in some of the writings of other leaders like Muhammad Guello in his Usul As Yasa and other extant works like Al-Qays al-Wabil, Pisi'ret al-Immam al-Adel where he discusses promotion of the welfare of the people as one of the principles of good governance. According to Muhammad Guello, it is important for the leader to be concerned about the promotion of temporal and religious activities that could bring benefit to the people. The leader should promote policies and programs to encourage artisans, traders, farmers, smiths, tailors, dyers, physicians, grocers, butchers, carpenters and other social and economic activities that are essential to the lives of the people in towns and villages. The leader must pursue development program to develop the settlements in the countryside by constructing roads, bridges and the management of markets. These are the views of Muhammad Guello. Social justice is one of the objectives of public participation in governance which the leadership of a state must promote. Interactive sessions and a democratic session provide the people with the opportunity to make their views known to the leadership. During the 19th century, the promotion of social justice by a ruler has featured in the writings of the Socrates Caliphate leadership. According to Usman Bin Pudju again, a leader becomes victorious over his opponents because of just leadership while injustice in the land could lead to the collapse of a kingdom. According to Abli Bin Pudju, the brother of Sheikh Ampojo, the leader must make himself accessible, accessible. I repeat, accessible, accessible. Holding settings for audience with the people. Holding settings for audience with the people. Especially women and children who are considered vulnerable. You know, the man, Miggida could have the opportunity to pass his views, his interests and others. Not necessarily in the case of women and children. So this kind of session should be conducted on a regular basis. On a regular basis, like what I think Zamfara Cycle has been trying to do. But I think along the line is being frustrated. In this country, it's not actually easy. It's not an easy task to float a civil society organization and sustain it. Because you have to be moving around. You have to be running around soliciting for support, financial support. Like the organization of this kind of activity. You don't expect the people, I mean the people officials here to contribute money and hold a session like this. They must go around and it's not an easy thing. So the leader must not rely on the reports of his appointees alone. According to Abli Bin Pudju. Complaints from ordinary people may possibly be against the appointed leader or the officials. And which means in the process they could suppress it. They could not allow the leader to get this. Khalib Muhammad Guello had also advised that a leader should be resolute in monitoring official conduct of his appointed officials and personnel staff who often take advantage of the ignorance of a leader to deceive him and make injustice accessible to him in order to serve their personal interest. I think the reference here should be to the parties of having covers in our government houses in the state house who cycle, I mean who put the leader in the middle and nobody allows him to understand what is happening in the larger society. At the end of the day, going with the morals of this, he is going to account for what he has done. Definitely. Leadership is about service to the people. Hence, the governor, meaning the leader, appointed must not think that he is the owner of the province. like the state. The governor should not think that the state belongs to him personally or the president should think that the country belongs to him personally and possibly his family and fight loyalist. And by doing this, it means such a leader would arrogate to himself the right to even turn the property of the state to personal use and which means he can allocate favors, favors to those he likes and he can deny favors and rights to others that maybe are not so fortunate to be close to him. Finally, conclusions and recommendations. We have learned from the brief history of old Zamora that it did not get the advantages available to the present Zamora state, such as population, especially the youth, the youth who are the vanguard of change in a society, who are the vanguard of any development that you want because they are the strong, they are the able-bodied and they could participate in terms of ideas, they have bright ideas and in terms of physical things they can do what uh the elderly cannot do. So Zamora state has this advantage, which was not the case in the case of the old kingdom of Zamora state. Yet, the rulers at that time were able to build a strong and varied economy in the context of their historical, historical reality. The paper hereby recommends as follows. The fight against insecurity, which is the most serious problem posed in the state, should be intensified using both kinetic and non-kinetic approaches in collaboration with neighboring states with the full support of the federal government. Number two, it is highly recommended that Zamora state should look at the possibility of resettling the IDPs without necessary delays to enable local communities engage in productive activities. I'm sure we all know, you go around, you see many of them suffering. Some of them are actually well-to-do in their localities but because of the menace of banditry and kidnapping, they have been forced to leave their settlement. We have to find a way of making them to go back and that will be another advantage to the economy of the, of the state. Zamora should harness the available human and material resources through pragmatic policies. Programmatic policies, I say. Through pragmatic policies and reforms for the development of the economy and society. This is important for the state to be able to survive, to survive in an ever-increasing competitive and of course unpredictable political environment in Nigeria. We should not take things for granted that all that is happening today will continue in the next uh twenty, hundred or fifty years. I think we have to, have to, have to rethink that this is not possible. That the society keeps on changing and we are part of a federation where the demands, the demands for government to do more is so much. And I think we have to find a way of looking inward to see that how we can take care of our future. Education must be given the deserved priority by government with sincere, I say with sincere and transparent commitment. With sincere and transparent commitment to facilitate the economic, technological and industrial transformation of the state. Zamora should be restored to its former status as an important economic and industrial center in northern Nigeria, which is a challenge to those in positions of leadership. Number six, which is the last, the development of a human factor is an essential component of good governance. We should be given priority in the state to enable the people contribute individually and collectively. Some contribute with their ideas, some contribute with their wealth. Uh, uh, this, I think it's, uh, it's not good, it's disheartening to see that some well-to-do, some wealthy individuals from the state will prepare to go elsewhere and invest their money and run away from their home state. I think this is one of the ways that I, this is one of the things that the government should look at and also address it. I thank you so much for listening to me and also thank God which has given me faith.
Please can you give chance to His Excellency to see the real picture of the... His Excellency, my own perfect class, the picture right there, that is the...
...... That person is a, is an orphan who is out to job, off to this particular type. He is now, he is now being enrolled by one of the principals that ever taught him at that side of... He now is, at the principal of this school now, this is C I S, Sokolab Health Technology. He now enrolled that person on, at just a private, private, I mean, uh, on contract basis, giving him just meager amount. But that boy I know that embassy is the one that have the assistant student in teaching the mathematics. If that boy should be, should be employed, that boy is ready to even go back to Zamora. So in a very tragic situation...
This is a smartest I can give you and the MC. You know, when someone, when somebody walked in an, in...
.................. Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala Allah Shikhi Baada Mulki Gawande Yesu ... Allah Ya Baa Wanamulki Tu Aruni Ya Bajhi Ya Baada Mulki Gawande Yesu Ya Karimulki Gawande Yesu Allah Ya Awka Gawande Yesu Ya Kaskan Tadwaande Yesu ... Ya Kamata So Tabbatad Wa Ki Lei Su Kena Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala So Sayasui Ayken De Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala Yeki Su ... Ranatashin Kyama Sadya Ummatanatikinsanani Apwe Mutani Bopwey Weende Allah Zema Innoa Ranat Devawe Innoa Imba Tashiba Degachikinsu Se Bayanin Shuga Ba'adili Ina Allah Ya Ba'kashugavanchi Tu Ambakada Masigaa Al Jannah Gahannunka Miyalu Gigerika Kasaya Kaye Adalchen Da Aki Bukata Edwa Edemunabeyanikan Siyasa Siyasa Kalma Tetsalarabchi Watetana Dukishugavanchi Apwe Hadith Thayda Sokosuna Dekalmar Siyasa Sanan Meehukunchi Niemon Mulki Amusulunchi Malamisunada Magangadu Akonwanan Shiyaha Latta Anibimulki Kobi Halatta Ba Tuengantertar Magana Ya Halatta Anibimulki Lokechinda Motunke Gane Hack Entalakawa Ana Wasidashi Al Ummatash Gachikina Halin Gere Nitanabukater Jajirtachimutani Weende Zasu Siyasu Piddo De Ita Degahalin De Tegetiki Anrasasu Kaykumakanaha Engyanza Ke Ewanan Tuya Halattakani Misugavanchi Amma Edemutunze Nishugavanchi Duenyasahusuna Duenyemosuarafahari Duenyatarukuti Tuwanampai Halatta Anibishugavanchiba Kana Nieman Sakae Keta Haram Amma Inkasan Kanariki Kya Wurmanufa Tuya Halattakani Ma Malamisunka Wukesar Anibi Yusuf Alaihisalam Wanda Shetti Ma Azizu Misra Kakuhkini Masayin Minister Nettatelen Aziki Niwwararreni Awanengekian Kuma Anintachi Kuma Yeknukushenatashi Kuma Munji Iren Ayken De Ani Degah Kansila Hazua Shugavancha Wana Ya Halatta Sabura Hakamata Sa Masuhali Ashitu Anima Ingansamu Atabatada Anyima Al Ummai Edwa Adine Musulunchi Ya Damudicha Ani Al Ummah Siyasa Yasa Wasuka Idujii Deseruta Weende Zaa Agina Al Ummah Musulma Shadi Al Musulunchi Taysei Wajan Tabbatada Weendan Al Amurain Ya Zai Al Ummata Samu Anichi Tasa Musamalafiya Asamoah Enkes Akani Talakawa De Shugavani Dumutani So Samurayowa Atikinnasua Atikinkwanchi Arhangkali So Yebachi Idanonsu Rufe Sobota Wa Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala De Zuchia Kekkawa Yenadagachikira Hamma Wada Allah Zema Kuoche Iren Al Ummah Ya Baadashugaba Shugavanchi De Gergali Baba Abundefiwanan Sheessa Sarke Muslim Muhammad Guello Yeki Bayanin Chewa Allah Yana Tabbatad Gomnati Kafera Ammami Adalchi Zata Uki Lu Kati Tana Shugavanchi Amma Shinie Ya Basu Shugavanchi De Gergali Wanda Shugavanchi Nang Bokban Abundesuki Ayki Ya Ya Zai Talakawasu Su Huda Kulunzasu Kanta Basada Bachi Basada Huthu Sete Al Ummazata Huda Umarudal Khatab Radhyalawa Anhu Deli Yeki Pitua Sademutani Suna Fana Yakamaza Agengali Agahalin De Talakawasu Getiki Duk Edanankukuma Weren Allah Kana Kari Nega Azabar Allah Umarudal Khatab Shida Keni Yeki Seide Yekora Momatan Nang Abinti Itadet Eto Sukachega Suna Paritiki Yechi Desuke Yukuka Ya Gesuna Darria Sanneyukuma Jira Yehuta Tu Edwa Wanasini Shugavanchi Amusulunchi Edemukada Wuk Kandemo Do Emu Na MiYekamata Shugabayeyi Matalakawa Minene Yukuma Hakin Talakawa Akanshugavani Zamora De Shugaba Abundeyakamata Mu Talakawa Dukwande Mukaza Aba Duwande Allah Ya Ba Shugavanchi Duwande Allah Ya Ba Mulki Akamu Tuya Nadewso Hakuka Akamu Edemukache Hakuka Aba Edempa Mumeusiwa Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala Zetambi Moranatashi Kyama Nataya Ana Bukata Mume Shetaa Dulene Talakawa Su La Wa Ulul Amri Minkum Yakwenduka Imaiduki Biyaya De Aaga Allah Biyaya De Aaga Madan Allah Degumashugavani Degachikinku Musulullah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam Yachi Wajibini Akambawa Muslimi Yedi Yayit Aaga Biyaya Degduwande Allah Ya Shugavanta Akailai Yechi Pima Ahabbawakariha Atikinn Abundekaki Su Dewanda Bakasut Wujhatun Naga Tana Chanja So Ki Bisagakake Iyekindaman Allah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam Baye Ba Umarde Wanan Kuma Igipii Yekali Sei Wotada Amatasamu Yesa Jdawa Ya Amiril Mumini Shawarat Aikaza Abakar Bepahimta Ba Yekali Shukuma Yekuma Seiwataranayzu Be Si Abakar Efeimti Lelitara Korani Shifi Sanetchi Atara Duhakabadu Beni Kabadu Shawara Yewyusi Anyeta Aa Imma Kabbara Sharab Facilities Emma Kantungomnati Amma Ili Yedesuke Ayki Yedalalemosuke Bepata Abubwa Beke Makran Tungomnati Ba Weende Gakaya Ayki Ga Karoroma Lamai Sabude Karemtin Su Babijin Duhakashugaba Dulene Yesaya Inya Ba Da Ayki Yebibi Ayken Nanyishi Ili Ya Wate Ya Wate Epohzamadule Ba Shugabay Efeimti Mutanene So Kazabishi Su Yeki Bukata Yema Ayki Duhakalabari Uzo Ahutu London Labari Uzo Ahutu Wasurari Aa Mutunya Zouna Tikin Al Ummatei Yayi Iya Kayilei Wajan Gane Chewa Ayuka Debaya Guumin Duwande Kabaiki Wa Ayken Kani Ke Allah Zetemakam Baya Komishina De Kabba Ma Ekate Ili Ni Ke Allah Zetambaya Ma Ekate Ili Ni Inkabba Wanda Baytanchan Tabba Ke Allah Zemono Hukunchi Kuingilat De Za Aywana Ayki Kabba Wanda Baytanchan Tabba Company De Bay De Kaya Ayki Kasam Bayi Ewanan Durna Kani Kabajhi Tu Abundese Farukina Abunakashana Chemi Lu Ketyay Ina Bukater Gaba Edi In Siyasa Mu Do Bepahimti Shikara Zamora Isherinde Bopwey Degah Wua Degawandalu Katin Anyegomnuto Chi Tapas Tunde Gatsad Aker Kin Shikara Isherinde Boka Anyegomnuto Chi Tapas Atikimgol Tuchan Tapos Anyegomnashita Tunde Ganaparko Harakawayuzu Tune Yanzuma Fa Za Iluka Chinda Dazu Kekkawan Talihi Tamayda Profesa Gavatami Pifataborku Zamora Na Tikin Wane Hali Kuhwayasani Mutanene Wujeta Wusamu Suke Hali De Mute Tiki Tuya Kamato Endan Masarule Namu Azoo Aga Ya Ya Zai Awawa Lisu Duhakasha Warata Gazab Eshugavani Mu Su Oke Abumataiki Mataiki Ya Ankati Za Erosha Ayukumi Lu Kati Guada Tu Za Ekoalapsin Akasa Kaywa Asaar Abun Kachiri Wanan Taran Karkusamu Karer Gwiwa Narishin Uzo Mutanede Yawa Aakamata Ayku Inezari Ina Korakoran Sukata Su Ina Ta Wonaga Ba Kuhakade Shugavani De Sumkosuna Ino Kubankui Gayata Kumoku Sa Wani Ege Yutumo Kwasu Yezamaria Anku Kema Takanda Ta Wonaga Ba Se Yaki Wana Mopahimte Ba Komi Za Afara Waluka Chika Za
..................... Kalmasi Yasa Degasa Sani Yesusu Siyasatam Se Yezamashini Mazda Ni Sasa Ya Ishugavanchi Yesusu Yena Tikini Ishugavanchi Ni Asiyasa Shini Shugavanchi Albinde Zetabatad Chewa Ba Wanda Zifinda Malamayde Gachikinsha Ani Shugavanchi Ko Siyasa Si Wande Ishajhichalmar Anabbi Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam Ya Fada Akim Hadisi Chewa Al Ummu Minde Sukagavata Kana Anbiagu Hum Tasusu Ha Dukka Nisu Anna Ba Wunsu Nisu Kashugavanchisu Musallim Ya Fadi Chewa Allah Ya Zaa De Itawal Man Dunya Akanzai Al Ummatei De Harbuda Sabai Al Ummah Anabi Musa Sunni Nasaba Imbadim Al Ummah Anabi Isa Namariya Bosunia Nasaba Imbadim Al Ummah Anabi Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam Muzallaki Antum Tufuna Sababuna Ummah Huni Shukam Al Ummata Sabai Indagagariw Kuba Wata Al Ummasi De Ayta Shing Kababu ta'al-umma se'da eytashin dunya. Tu duk al-ummu minna ma'ala yati. Anla ba'unsu neyke shugabanchisu. Yeti koyegoshi. Ba'ayanu chiwa shiba buwane Anabi. Amaza ati gavade shuwa gavani Khalifufi. Khalifa Abu Bakr Al Siddiq. Locatinda zama Khalifa Mozzou Allah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. Ga kalma defa'i. Ulli tu alaykum walastu be khayrukum. Anza'gani shugaba. An'ora ni shugaba akanku bananatiku ba. Wajibini du shugabayasan. Shiza bin Allah ne bahda nyafi. Wadda de ke shugabanchi ba. Sena Umar dan khatab. Locatinda yeki Amirul Mu'mini. Kamayada dokta ibada misari. Shiyahu yeki yiji. Masu zaha'giyishi. De masuyahu. Kuma. Idan akaza ha'giyishi. Ku akasukomnati shi zi awuna. Idan haka abi yeki tusayi yala. Mafiwa shugabani anzoo. Ya'husuki bukata. Basu so'agaya masu gaskiya inbatada chida'ayisuba. Buwano kuskuli. Ena ba'ta apahimta. Edwa muslimi. Shugabanchi yana bukata. Collective responsibilities. Collective ideas. Shugaba. Tuna'ni shiba izamatu nani. Melita'fin ta'alimun ta'alim yeki chiwa. Mutani niri ukuli. Ni ar-ra'jul kabil. Wadispo ra'jul. Wala shay'aa. Apwe chikake mutun. Apwe de mi mutun. Apwe zero behind the decimal point. Wanda damaychi abanza. La shay'aa. Yeti chikake mutun shini mila. Mila ayi mayi tunani mayi ilimi. Amaya na sha'wara. Rabbi mutun yana de fuskabi. Hudeena amhani de tunani shiba isha'wara. Koku ma shiba'ha de tunani se'de abinde ak'ora shi akayse'ebi. Iden shugabayasan mosuni yeki itafiyenda tunani shi. Shiba'ha de na'sha tunani. Shima yazam rabbi. Mutun. Na ukushini wanda. Bangzani. Bay de tunani. Go'bitu nani inze'ing al-ami. Kuma bayi sha'wara. Tu shi wannan. Kulun chikinda nasani ziray. Allah isha'ir. Al-Qur'an ya tabbatamuna washa'wunhum fil'am. Wa amruhum shura bainuhum. Shiasa aki esee. Shiasa aki executive council members. Shiasa shugabankasa eykida. Watu aynefin ministochi de sa'uransu. Shiasa gomne eykida. Komishino ni. De masu la'shi sha'wara. Ba'wey kaway annada haka bani. Duwana inyachi abu bagi farini kachi e'farini. Bagi farini yachi bagi kachi haka yo excellency wala kachi amanati. Sanan. Edwa muslimi amari shugabanchi. Se'da Allah yati ma'lamayi fa'ila azamta fatwa ka'ala. Za'ka isha'wara. Amma inkayi niyin. Wannan al-ami kazarat. Kadogaraga Allah. Shugabanchi yana bukata ha'inkay. Se'abunagim. Sifashugaba. Shugaba anasze'zambe ismaram Allah. Ye zamami tarfi. Inla khayra manista ajarta al-qawi'u al-amin. Ye zamami amanati. Ye zamami ilimi akanshugabanchi. Sanay zamaa adali. Sanan kuma yzama yedeyi hidima susu mutashiyawala. Sayidul qo'mi xadi mu. Dulene shugabayasan ndawannan. Kulukum rai. Okulukuma sa'urunu arra'iyati. Dukka mu'ma sukii uni. Shugabani niza atabiyu. Shugaba akantalakawa. Maygida akayginan shi. Ma'tar awri. Iyani gida. May kulada wani angari. De tattali aziki koduki yer maygidan shi shima amanati zaa atabish. Abunaku. Wanda she'ni lukusa garakarshi. Hakin shugaba. Akantalakawasa. Nafarku. Mozzou Allah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam yati. Assam wa ta'ag. Alal maril muslim. Wajibini kasurari magana shugaba. Kaymata'aa kaybiyaya. Ma'lam yu'mar bima'ziya. Matuka ba'umrichi kakayda kasaba ma'alla ba. Inkansi kasaba ma'alla. Fa'la sa'awala va'ag. Wanu li mozzou Allah yati. Inla antaro kufra bawa'ha. Duleke mashugaba na'ha'ha se inkaga kaferchi karara. Sanan aginwa mashugaba. Amutun tashi. Atimaka mashiga ayuka al-kheegi de'loku. Ay masa adu'a wajibini. Ay masa yasiha ya'aki wa shugabanasiha. Kakaruto hadisen adine na siha. Ullali man. Harakin de Mozzou Allah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. Inkwa tushabesu. Sukatanbe shigawa zaa ayne siha. Farukumu pahimti kalman na siha hadisen nan ba'wey wa aziba. Ba'kuma dan gomi de'aki zo'akasuwa abunani ra'ali a'likibaka kudiba. Na siha shini kewta temu'ama la'ana. Adini kewta temu'ala. Mu'ama la'iga Allah. De Mozzou Allah de'ita'fin Allah. Tu yana de'aki. Kewta temu'ama la'de shugaba. Shini kadogibukatar weyende basu yezua galika kaymash. Sanan karka bani azagechi. Ga'abinde ba'de ede ba. Bayi abin zagim. Bakuma zagishugabani. Ba'de bi abuchika muslimi kiriki. Ah sanan. Borimus allakazuaga abulguje. Hakin talakawadasharshi kenen akanshugaba. Yemo'su adalchi. Yesama mosu abubu mora'ayua. Dule kulada adini. Alladina emma kanahum fil ardha akabu salata hazua karchi. Sanan dunya su'ukula mosu de ita. Shini profesa chikin pe'faschi chi ayu'lfaya. Duwanda yegaya mashugabankasa. Ku yegaya wani guhna. Kowani chiwa wana lukalgamchiwa aga'ja'lfaya gehi yacha amanati. Ayeykii ayu'lfaya. Wajibini ita'lfaya. Se'de ayita yedde kamata kume yedde datchi. Sanan akula. Matalakawada sa'zarsu. Akula de shani awrata'ya yate kitafiyah. Akula de shani tarbiya. Sanan akula masu de gantantakasu. Sanan akula masu de tunanisu de hankalisu. Wajibini shugabani suhane shuguwa kayan ma'yla shay'ay. Akarfa fi hisba. Akarfa fi jani ansaru. Wasu ayuka ta'adanchi de'aki. Inba ayi shay'ay hankali ya'ka'oba. Wala ibazagiaba. Sanan shugabayayi hisai. Akan al-amdu bil-ma'aruf wa'nahyu anal-muqar. Chiwa akarfa fi masu chiwa abi Allah. Sanan kuma abar abi nda'ala yati abari. Tu sanan shugabayu kulada ilimi. Shugabayu kulada bangaran lafiya. Sanan de garshi katkat. Shugabayu kulada bangaran saru. Mana adua. Wannan taru Allah isha'mashal barakah. Allah yati mikimi dereja'wunna de dukka nimukarabansu. Wassalamu alaykum wa rahmat.
Sukagechiki de buosu. Critical infrastructure de jamama sukii bukata shafu muski anfa'anasu. Halayansu ginegine sunlala yati. Babu sili. Ba'kujiru. Ba'urinzama. Wanu li makarantu sunzama gona ki. Wanu li asibitu o'tam bagada yati. Wanu li babu magani. Ba'ma'lamay. Ba'kayan eykii. Ba'ba en'aki tepa dimba'dim. Abum babu da'jinji. So wanne suni halayende sukagechiki. Kuma wanne she'ni eykinda yeki gabonku. Kamayada kaki geni wannan government secondary school anka chi. Kagahalayende. Takhalayende takagechiki afatutudi. Ah gidemukiywannan magana. Ga ginegine na'ndusulala yati kadain kadain. Um. Wannan kuma government secondary school badarawa. Ah summa. Wanu li ba'ta'agoki. Ah wanu li ruansama suna sa'ukaji kin na'lepe suna akaratu. Wanu li babu manu kujiru. Wanu li azuzu masu tashi. Sfiziyalala yati. Duka wannan suni de halay makarantumu. Across the forested. Ba'wey wetaloka gammembah. Kowani. Kowani lokal gammembah kuma wani wani wadu. A'ha. Ga'ba'ha de across the forested. Wannan suni halay. Ba'makarantu. E'ba asibitu o'tamoma haka sukiki. So kadain kadain muna akalu. Zamuga hutu nan. Ah across local government. Wannan abukukeina. Wancha mongeniya anka local government. Wannan abukura local government. Haka zasu ati gaba. Ah fi. Ah bungutu. Malu. Zurmi shekafi. Duka haka halay sukiki. Ah babu. Babu enda da'ati ga. Ga sa'uti. Kuma de'de burgo du. Ah munu rukuche rukuche. Munu kirai kirai. Munu te'he'ete'he neman. Atimaka agara pu'ya'ani. Ah muna ade dyan. Muna ade kani. Muna ade jipoti. Muna ada wendebasu de karihi apweymara. Atimaka abasu ilimi na engan tachi. No adenamukake kalu. Ah shi ilimi. Delahia. De zaruba abubu ani de za'asasi yasa atikinsuwa. Abubu ani de sokaza ma basic human rights. Wannan de'akamata. Kuwaya sa'misun engan tachi. Kuma hakin niga shugabani. So ba'de engan tachi wannan. Ah. Tu amari. Allah will have it. Ha'ga hademukianzua avan for us. Your Excellency. Wannan she'ni halayende ke gabonku. Wannan she'ni eykinda ke gabonku. So se'kuma anjaja she' insha'allah. De wanne muna akira ga elected representatives. Um eresu. Ah this. Honorable. Soleiman Gumi. Ah the honorable. Amorimipales. Dokumodanda akawakinta. Una akalu. Abinda muki ukari ni she'ni. Ah monemi. Through constituency projects. Haka itila wana wadu. Kowani constituency de'kaga shukuda. Ru'utu request. Ati makarantaka zatana bukata timoku kaza. Through constituency project. Agara wannan makarantu. Ou agara wannan asibitu. Ou agara wannan. Ou iti ginwannam bohalden. Inda constituency allowances basu isa. Funds basu isa. Animiti mokon dunu agencies. Ana eya halawa. Apwey CTSB. De'ki programda. Ana ebada ten percent. So badan ninety percent. Dukka wannan. Za'renti timakam.
I'm not even looking at me. Yeah, he actually a target. But I need the sun and come on empowerment. Uh, yeah, I think I can bring in the car out. I can bring in the whole here. I can bring in the for example. I can buy the thing. I wonder that's what I need. That's what I'm sorry. What I don't know about. Yeah, individual empowerment that I keep my money. Uh, so when I watch the show, I don't cook again. When I have this, I can run. That was a hard little job. Who am I supposed to get?
Thank you.
Over the next four years, hopefully eight more years. Uh, yes, that one is she. I can make a book.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, your excellency, behalf of Zafar Saif, I wish to present this uh, needs assistance by deciding to the president government and those elected leaders so that they can go through and see what they can do on behalf of the side. Thank you very much on behalf of government. Thank you very much. Excellency, I wish to say this. This is what is required almost in every country. This is what is, this is what is very much. Hello, hello. This is what is very much required. What I will recommend to the state government to do, looking at all what they have presented, maybe they have already they have for health, for education, even for this too. And especially if there is also success for water and sanitation, is to have a committee, to have a showing, review and prioritization and really to get the implementation to begin. It is not easy to bring development partners. I worked with United Nations agencies for thirty-four years, mostly outside Nigeria in twelve countries. But for review me, this is what I give of my office to decide what we need to contribute. So with this, once it is done, it is very easy to bring this development partners to support. But if the state government stands on one side and just be talking, it will not work. Number two, I would like to commend to the state government. The issue of young people in Zamfara State is among the worst in our country. There is a strong need to establish, if there is none, maybe a direct way that handles issue of young people. Yet we have young people who are abusing and abusing of drugs. We have young people who are out of school for one or another. We have young people who are abusing and abusing of drugs. In fact, it's not only focuses them who are selling those drugs. Those drugs should have triple punishment than even for those two young children. The next water and sanitation, what like if you go to Bogu. Back in nineteen ninety-two, if you open, you can open a cup in your own house and drink water. Today in twenty twenty-three, there is no house in Bogu that you can take water. You can tap water unless if you have a bowl. And I'm sure this is not the issue facing Gugur Anu. Almost all the American councils of this state, you don't have anything like that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I like it. Um, you got down. I don't need to the chiogatikina. I got cool. What you do, I can tell you that I like to chiog. I play chiog. I'm gonna catch a little bit of that. I play chiog. I'm gonna get some time to watch a new watch. To Zamfara, now by so young of a side, who knows an umma. So yeah, he who he so got no choice. I got it. So so got no much on our career man. Can I actually not need that mother to see? San Naviu, Edan, Kala, so in chiu. But I'm gonna deport in chiu. Chiombe it. You are, Edan, I'm gonna make a run to do it. I'm gonna get a shoe. But my my, who I'm gonna ask it. But my daddy, the my my, 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 I said it. Do it again in the morning. So what I got, I didn't know about the shower. Um, when I die, what I'm gonna call a car out of the car, I go move it to my age. Edan, I'm gonna do. It is my need to do a deba. So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna call a car out for many years with qualification. Yeah, the one that got tired early. There are a lot of things we can touch with. Nanta, I can go ahead, watch, I'm gonna get an NPC. Oh, when we do the protest. Come, I have some kind of song in the car. Come, I have a mission. What do you want? To me, they are not going to watch this. They should be able to hear. So what I got, I got, I got to, I'm gonna do my shoe. Call it to what I'm gonna do. Sanan, if you know, my goodness, I ain't chiwa. My power, who I'm power, who I'm, I'm power in my side. She can, I got that. It's a very powerful. I'm man, that's why I actually, I don't come at the middle of the room. Some Saniska, I pass away. I'm gonna get my data. I'm gonna say, I got, I attack some people. God, I believe that that by who I call that I need that. My daddy put it. I go to my education, do you get that? Could have a chicken. I'm my own way, I get this car. I'm see my father who I could have. It is in my shadow, I'm sure my. Why the cost? So much of what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do. Oh, my, yes, for the last, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, you're a good guy. The buyer, so let me see. I'm a moonlight. What I'm gonna do, I'm gonna make a custom. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say. So my name is a little.
If the government can say, okay, they are willing to get the funds to make these collections and fill the gaps where identifying it would be very difficult. So I would advise the Zafar State Government to focus and start working for the international donors to support the government so that at least, yeah, they can, for example, on the issue of emergency education, there is some organizations who agree with education. So definitely, they can support them likewise our heads. Thank you very much.
Sunana, kula iba romada, dagah wukuma rabatiri kitare in Nigeria. N'ajidadiyewan na taru daaki da, the first cycle, sukai, the purpose of party, namasu akomana al amali nesuke khaowu, wey nidesuke pagaachi, akal amali nago mletchi. Amaziri n'ajani, inata contribution desambaya, wale yaka majon na gomneti, desumo wukuta, desumbe bofina house, tuna the house of the senate, senate, the state house. Mata samu, rishya aiki ni, maki akisitshiye kichituwa kwa raya. Yaka mata, ifyolu mataki, zesa jaowu mata samu, gomni atura sugar, yele indra samu aiki nede kama tushii. Akwe aikara damwa, wey deketskiya makanasi, ana tawe aiki muzampara, after reya Nigeria. So tari deyawa, za kara ka, ideteka maja, kuki danza para mutu tamaani, idanin sinio haka, bi izin lai taala, hamisin alenza para, abayemba esu para bali. Ok, idankei bichke, za kara ka, al shanta akwaisa, hamu wosule kichungu, mu azampara, gurintura sugar, gomni je kawanawu. Ama akwe wasumu tani, sungei, suna inze, sukachiwa, sumu musani, susunji, gaba sunsa wala zenda ama, zebare desali, dabadiyena na nubu do meyadusi, damajali su tareya, nago mi bukwe, adu ina apichara, kota aiki, ok, tari, ok, tari. Sehese, tappaketa, muta neyi, suna na wukusuru, wukusuru sa wulchi.
Okay, thank you very much.
...of international, it is a local NGO that just came into the offer, they said. So but what I'm trying to call the government now here is, please, they should have a lot of passion for NGOs because they have a lot to give to this place. They are willing to work, the only one that has a good job on this place is Pekin.
Okay, thank you very much.
Zampara saka, wajaka tari ki zampara, banu zampara saka kula ba boata. Kuma emo kulu wa tari ni, al shan shu gavanchi shen ni zampara saka kula ta e taru, ho ha denna. Al shu gavanchi mato ni, zampara saka kula ta e taru, ho ha denna. Gomneti na kara kuchanza. Abunnu bichini, horfong gomneti ana so ayara da, aikera e zampara saka kula, e taru, al jidadi abunnu kaskia. Intehe ya te tehe, anka samu uchutai makanasi aja i tari he. Yaka mata ayara, sabu, elunwan na zamani ta ahi, abasoda ma su kira mutani, abunda akamatu gomneti chia. E anka lulu non, ok, toza akuma inaka, one shi.
Okay, thank you very much.
Watu, empa omeba, inna mka watachi, kiba mara makanan, empa ome, irengeni ansiyaza, sikisuzo saraba khae, ye ki, lokachi lokachi n'ango. Ah, achikin takada, demuka makanan, empa ome watu, bewa sujoma adama, yezama na sunsa bakii, kuma singa wu nde kama ta, wajika fe do gomneti, na guri.
I will give twenty-two minutes. Therefore, I will go direct to what I am saying. Ah, inada, emma da kunada sukazo, dagamada, da wunna ka, da wonguri, nanakansu. I would like to speak a long way that you will understand better. Ah, nay nojelisa, annay ka assembly, nay she kara wuku, ambanda ama, na wajika chage ma. Nay kara tu awuli, nay woso abuguwa, naga woso abuguwa, napume yu kura kura i, napume woso abuguwa nade din. Insha Allah, uta ala, ina wapu tokachi, zengana kura kura, nade din. Gomneti na kuni, motuka hiye ta, han kela na maye, annay ka assembly nade ni. Motales aru, aiki ni, kara kui, za wame da han kani, motuka, zamele sukisha, ala uta ala. Amatales aru, itachi agenda number one, mo itacha da abuguwa, kura uku. I think, ah, saala amasambo, se debi mukiti, siyasa, mbi muki, kuma mbi muki chisi, sufa, abundete ngachigwa, talas aru, ukun da dagamada, wunna ka wonguri, ijiha, hazua makanani, abundee ku ku, kara kanwa, kita, beneficu wa nza, maye za kanyo, wenzua, ak, achikin beresati. Mo ni, abuguwa da, damwa ku, wusara abuguwa da, damwa wey, 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 senate, the public, se bidha, saala, mbi muki china, wey, makanani, mbi muki choki. Akwe kala muni deyawa, talas aru, tibiju, wadupataki tijuba. Insha Allah, uta ala, ina dyanki, kuma ina tokachi, me gema gomna, shima itachi agenda shi na kawa, kuma insha Allah, hazama ke, kama shu, n'ya kani chewa, kama doro na sala. Motala tibiju itachi, motala ruwa, shak, dami gosuwa, wu, kuda ba temu, mo ni, desel ya kama, mosan, dami gosuwa, achikin budget, n'epera rama, sabu, de gomnu chia, bate oku, dami gosuwa, bate oku, dami gosuwa, dia fuzan, wu, ya, mukotokate tijwa, mo ni, tokate ansa, ah, dami gosuwa, achikin budget. Kamay na wukasani, aiki kumajelisa, abu okuni, ah, micros, project population, and oversight, one suki, abu wu, nde muki, na wajelisa. Amabu wu, nde mu, wey, entitled to nominate a project, abu wu, nominate there, as a constituency project. And also, we have a zone intervention project, sometimes it varies from forty, fifty, it depends on the approbation of that particular year. So, wena abuna esu de muki, kika ta wa, abu wu, nde zamui, woso musukire klasus, woso subada, napu, woso subada, skolash, woso suikada, woso suikada. Dukwena abu wu, zamati, gomna, bata, manage one, the thing, resources, nde kia, wana suwa, muri, wosu kubi, da aki, bama, bama kontolo, wu, wu, de kana kuti, wana obaka mchwana. Sabu, kari she, ina aki ra, atoka inconstituency, du one eki, de wata damwa, wu, wunna, abu deki, kani ya kama ta ahi, kala wale nde muki, uskata shi eki, ba, alu, ku, akau wunna, mosti, mukani lasu, wu, wu, de muka, tani lasu, lakansu. Idan, waka mukutu, wale, kana, muka tani, se, muka eka, muka, 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 muka nde mukani, abu gudani, ma, nde wamaka ma, shi, wata, muka, shi, nde mukani, fa, wala obaka mchwana. Danaka, ina aki ra, nde mukani, du one eki, de wale sa, abu deki, su, aini, mmasa, abu aini, wuli, da alla, alu, ku, wunna, akau wunna, ni, na wosu, si, wu, pe, sasimusu. Navale, n'ngobe, mukani, de kama ta, anima, akau, wu, wana obaka mchwana. Zamana, lay annay ka assembly, she kara wu, de lay, takata, wu, kau, nde nere, sipi, official complaint, na al umma, guda transpo machi, guda akau, akam, bezale, taki, guda akan, okama, ekada, se, tu, akau, ta, akam, bezale, bi, amu, edjarawa, nneku, lay aktin akantane, bi, amaya, wu, edita, kusu, edjarawa, nneku, ala. Kamda suwa, n'yesi, kona, ta, official, hazua, iyo, danaka, ina aki ra, nde mukani, a ichuwa, de abuguwa, aini, wunna, kamay, na zampara saka, de aini, wunna, ta, ikabda, ayu, kanda, tiki, de muka, atamui. Yaka mata, at the same time, mu, nde muka, ta, bayi, kuma se, hazaka, aku, abu wu, nde muka. Ni, na ina ajjuwa, guda, kashali, tana, across, wusu, n'ya, na, isu, akora, na, lay aki, beresati, na, ah, sani, na, lay awaki, na, eh, za, ngosama, na, lay, dakwana, kuma ku, wu, nde, complete effort, ah, klasus, muki, da, da, bujiru, de kubi, de kubi. Wosu, da kachik, ajjuwa, nde muka, yowu, awa, yowu, kari, she, kawa, aki, shi, achik su, sabu, bama, da, de, kuna, lasu, zonasu, kara tu, chiusu. One na, ina, ede, kaski, kalu, nde, ndu, ndu, ndu. Kasha, kashi, ah, akwe, kala, nde muki, uskata, kama ta, deyawa, wu, wala, gomashin, wu, wala, gomosha, wu, wala, gomosha, wu, wala, kasa, ina su, sanate mukani. Ni, de, du one, de, zurek, aman, kampen, muka, inna chida, kesi, aman, mey, mukani. Du one, de, zurek, aman, kampen, damashishi, inna chida, kesi, aman, mey, damashishi. One na, by, tij, akchi, me, inda, riti, desa, awa, na, yena, achikin, bi, mba, shi, le, kion, takawa, du one, de, zurek, mata, lokachi, shi, eki, de kampen, sabu, da, banyan kampen, kasa, se, na, awa, wawa, se, na, posta, se, na, bana, se, na, stika, du one, ina, abu wu, wala, de, fight, and lot of money, dia, abu, wu, wala, abu, mukani, de su, su, rek, aman, de, na, aki, du, ina, abu wu. Inna chida, kaya, wale, su, be, kata, aiki, be, kata, jari, be, kata, kumi, de kubi, kawa yu, ye, ke, kani, bichini, du one, de, azumi, ye, eki, eh, ma, na, kuroke, eh, gabu mu, wala, na, kaza, ga, mota, kuma, wala, la, yu, mani, da, ahi, kaza, mota, itama, aziki, chini, idan, kana, mata, shi, wu, waka, mota, kasa, eki, ta, kaisa, na, eki, kana, su, chidi, wu, kapa, mashishi, ma, aziki, kana, kaisa, chidi, kaisa, na, ba, kama ta, ku, ba, kama, mashishi, basi, hana, mukabi, abu, mukaratawa, basi, hana, gusama, muka, aki, afra, zama, baka, basi, hana, gusama, de, kuroke, klasu, muka, basi, hana, gusama, de, weshaka, wu, ipu, suki, abu wu, wala, wena, abu wu, ah, su, yu, abu wu, na, aki, aki, ah, one, na, abu, de, wu, kuna, kame, aki, monku, yu, kasi, monka, ina, wu, kasa, bera, kura, ina, deyawa, insha Allah, uta ala, ina, tokachi, ah, ngosu, one, na, kama san, na, kanti, motuka, kana, tokachi, na, tu, su, su, kura, kura, na, wu, nde, kama san, na, tokachi.
Thank you very much.
Like someone said, after the cycle, there's no other. I believe him too, I agree with him. Ah, so many times, other organizations would come to us and ask for money and support to organize things, but the cycle has never done so. Like the chairman rightly said, you have to keep yourself clean in order to point fingers. And I think what you are doing is you are positioning yourselves in the right position so that you can hold people in offices accountable. Um, I know Dennis Kennedy once mentioned, he said, ask your, ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country. I think what the cycle is doing is asking themselves what can they do for the cut for Zafar State and they are doing the right thing. Uh, I want to especially thank our representative of the GVA today, Professor, and the Ula Madha presented papers today. I think they have really, really enriched me today. I have learned so much from their presentation, which I hope will be a guiding principle for me to execute my next formal term in an office. Um, they mentioned so many things, like being accessible to your constituents. Uh, I personally benefited from that. I, I think it's one of the things that would solve our problem. When you listen to people, when you listen to good counsel, then I think you hardly go wrong. Uh, like, uh, my, my, like, was mentioned earlier, a good leader should be able to decipher and listen to good counsel. I think, thank you very much for that. Um, in the, I, I thought the presenters would not mention security in their presentation, but if they properly mention security, I think the Zafar State, uh, the major problem they're having is security. Once we solve security issues, then eighty percent of our problems are solved. Education, road, good roads, empowerment, all those follow suit and everybody will be happy with that. Um, I, I think, uh, to show how transparent the Zafar Cycle is in their activities, they chose a prominent soil, son of the soil, who in third person of the Zafar side. Um, I think this is a very, very good choice for presentation of an award of achievement. Uh, I, I, you're not presenting any award to any politician because I believe politicians are doing what they are being chosen to do. So you don't need to award them, but when you select people of good character and reward them so that other people can relate. We have a lot of nazis in Zafara, like in Gumi, we have, uh, what's his name, Manal Alwakar, I think he's a member, he's part of the people I should call here, that deserve such accolades. Uh, so please, we should look at these people and help them achieve what they have set themselves to achieve in bringing good governance, good tidings to our people. Um, based on that, I think your award will not be complete if you don't give a small token to the Nazifa. So I'll give him a small token of hundred thousand so that he can, thank you very much. Uh, on this note, I, I think my, my focus has always been on education and from all the lectures I've heard today, education seems to be at the forefront after security. And I think that's the direction I will keep on going, uh, both Islamic and Western education because the, the lack of any of them will not produce a complete human being. Many people that are religious, they know what is good and what is wrong, you know? That is why we're having this in security issues because if we had given the nomadic full audience adequate Islamic education, I don't think they need Western education to tell them that what they are doing is wrong, you know? So, um, I, I think you need to look at both directions, both the Islamic and the Western education so that we can have a very sound, uh, population. Um, on this note, I would like to say thank you very much for inviting me to be part of this occasion and I hope you will not just stay in Zafar and be organizing, I think you should go to Gumi too and organize. Because my colleague here has bragging that half of the hall is filled with people from Zafar. Go to Gumi and you see a bigger hall. Thank you very much.
To exigencies of time, uh, quickly before going into the few remarks I penned down, uh, permit me to quickly respond to the presentation done by the Zafar Cycle Chairman and to inform this august gathering that as recent as yesterday evening, His Excellency led a strategic team to discuss issues like this. And in that meeting, he unveiled to us that five primary schools in each local government area of the state have already been penciled down. So ours was to review in order for a directive to be given for an underspot, needs assessment of such schools with a view to quickly bring them to the level that he thinks they should be. And when we met him, after the level, what we don't enough have is the victorious that were presented here. So for His Excellency, all these issues are at his fingertips and he just looked over them, the key critical sectors, education, health, water and sanitation. Again, as recent as also yesterday, uh, by eleven thirty, he also, um, held a strategic meeting with regard to the provision of water supply in Busao, the state capital, as well as requiring a strategic roadmap that will guide him in delivering water supply in all the LGAs. Our elder manager, Nusa, did mention previous run where children, in visit such, uh, local government areas, we do remember, remember, they did take us there, we do see pipe of water coming out of the tubs, but now they have all gone dry. So we are quickly looking into that. By Monday, His Excellency is going to inaugurate a, a water committee brought out from our retirees. This, one of them was a former general manager of Sofo Water Board and also retired former entities of Zafar Water, but all brought together and had a meeting with them and gave them a marching order and a very robust terms of reference for them to submit a roadmap on water within the next two weeks and give them a marching order. So that is, we are, we are critically looking at all these issues. Uh, quickly permit me to go into the few points I, I penned down. Uh, I thank you all for being here today as we discuss the theme, a new Zafar State towards achieving a people-centered public service. Under the leadership of His Excellency, Dr. Dogan Lawan, Zafar State is witnessing a significant shift in governance towards prioritizing the welfare and working of the people through judicial application of scarce resources. Past administrations have indeed neglected all sectors of the economy with attendant severe consequences for the people of Zafar State. Indeed, boundary and other criminal activities were underized and are still rising, posing a threat to the safety and security of our citizens. Worker salaries were not paid for months, causing immense hardship and frustration among the dedicated workforce. We all recall, even NEPO for years has not been paid, but as we speak, insha Allah, by Monday, our young ones, the pupils, insha Allah, will participate in this year's NEPO exams and going forward. For as long as we remain at the number of affairs, it shall never happen again. Our pupils will participate, right, insha Allah. So for Dr. Dogan Lawan, the governance of Zafar State is going to be people-centered with policies and programs. The new administration is visually committed to implementing people-centered policies and programs that prioritize the needs of the citizens. This is by extension, uh, is going to be bottom top approach with the people taking center stage and taking ownership of what happens there. This is to ensure accountability and transparency in the way we do things. We understand that the success of any government is ultimately measured by the impact it has on the lives of the people. A few areas we have penned down, uh, one, addressing boundary and criminal activities. The government recognizes the urgent need to combat boundary and other criminal activities that are plaguing our state and slow developmental projects or even brought into the house. We will soon unveil a new security strategy to combat boundary and other criminal activities. We will explore, insha Allah, all available options to restore peace and security to our communities, working closely with security agencies and engaging with local communities for support and cooperation. But the state government has made it very clear, all ambiguous, that soon, of course, are here in aid, but knowing the balance, insha Allah, we will not go down again. Uh, two, reforming the government and positioning the civil service. The civil service is the backbone of any government and we are committed to the positioning it for greater productivity and efficiency. A comprehensive civil service response, uh, which will create and move the service to be more responsive, transparent, and accountable to the people of Zafar State and that which serves the greater majority of the people diligently and transparently. Uh, the next one is infrastructure development in Busao and beyond. Uh, we are all, I believe, majority of us, ninety-five or ninety-nine percent in this hall, are all from Zafar State. This state council is indeed not a defeating one. So there's a Marshall Plan from insha Allah, further invested in Busao to after, um, MGC Busao, there will be a modern dual college with, with, activities that will benefit all. The next one is expanding the revenue base. To achieve a direct development, we must raise the state's revenue base. We will recognize various strategies to boost internally generated revenue, attract investments, and create an enabling environment for businesses to thrive. The last one is engaging citizens and stakeholders. The government acknowledged that involvement and participation of citizens, community leaders, leaders of thought, and other mental groups like the Zafar Cycle shall be a crucial thing for the state government, for our successful governance, who establish platforms, boost mechanisms to ensure effective communication, feedback, and collaboration with all stakeholders, foster a sense of ownership and inclusiveness in the decision-making process. But plusively, the dawn of a new era in Zafar State brings with it sacrifice, renewed hope and determination. The new administration under the leadership of His Excellency, Dr. Dogan Lawan, is committed to building a people-centered public service that prioritizes the needs and aspirations of the citizens. Together, we can transform Zafar State into a model of good governance, prosperity, and sustainable development, insha Allah. Lastly, I use this forum to thank the good people of Zafar State for their immense support for our administration's efforts to build a better future for the state. I assure you that we will not rail from our mission of rescuing Zafar State. It is a journey that we must collectively embark upon and as citizens and members of the pressure group, we have a great stake in this. By holding ourselves accountable any day, anywhere, we will remain focused on this great mission. Finally, it is our hope once again to plead with Zafar Cycle to continue, to remain dogged, use their eagle eye to advise governments, community leaders, our areas, district heads to draw our attention because going forward, Zafara must move, must move forward, insha Allah. Thank you very much and much.
Thank you.
Sabu, nde kichikin takada, nde nagabata, atakachi, akanshu gavanchi ni, dahaki, shu gavani, akantala ka, dahaki, antala ka, akanshu gavani, ndashi, shu gavanchi, asali, annaba, wongala, susuke, ira gabaini, ye kuma, kama, sumuli ki, bayon wana, kuma, aiki, shu gavani, dubbe fi, su, kula, da, amana, da, ala, ebasa, ba, sui, adechi, su samu, ah, samu, amatala ka, sa, abu, mora, raywa, su, kula, da, ilimi, su, su, kula, mosu, da, sa, su, kade, gurbata, su, kula, mosu, da, hankalin, su, su, kula, mosu, da, lafi, su, su, kula, mosu, da, duk, abinda, za, achi, wa, tu, ze, temu, kisu, bauta, mubenge jin, su, san, nasu, liki, eduke, su, amasai, amana, wongala, zitambe, su, ah, su, kuma, watanda, aki, shu gavanta, ba, ban, aiki, su, shi, ni, su, yuma, adu, ah, su, yuma, shu gaba, adu, ah, san, nasu, masafa, al-khairi, san, nasu, tunata, de, she, idan, ya, manta, su, dao, de, she, idan, ya, kuskuli, duka, achikin, hikima, san, na, bayon wana, su, masada, amutukarba, sa, wongala, bani, ye, umanizwa, galizu, one, na, atakachi, kenan, abinda, pe, pataposa. Salaam alaikum.
Gabatar, amta isu, kachi ni, akawatu, sa, han, pokuma, shigada, jamaa, watu, aluma, achikin, nda, aki, tepia, do, gomneti. One, na, mka chi, yena, nde, kachikin, ki, shikai, one, da, za, sa, kau, miliki, na, adechi, miliki, one, de, aki, na, tepia, da, jamaa, miliki, one, de, aki, na, kau, chiga ba, da, kuma, watu, maga, na, masalu, wali, da, siki, kuskanta, aluma.
Onaguri.
Onaguri.
Mo shiri ani, domu ba, da, wata, uh, wata, hanyah, da, wada nda, akaza, ba, da, kuma, wada nda, sukai, za, bi, za, su, alu, su, tatonna, uh, su, hitu, da, wata, hanyah, da, za, ba, su, wada nda, sukai, za, bi, za, su, samu, za, samu, mosu, da, chiga, ba, nda, suki, inima, da, shu gavani, su, uh, monsan, tuluka, chi, nyake, inima, za, bi, shu gavani, su, alakoli, za, su, ba, da, za, su, kau, chiga ba, we, za, su, gar, ilimi, za, su, gar, lahe, amabo, su, san, minini, ye, akamatsala, ilimi, mbaku, ye, akamatsala, lahe, misali, su, mo, shiga, kau, yuka, mo, shiga, uh, burari, deywa, mon, tatonna, da, mutani, mon, ka, du, korehe, korehen, su, da, bukatu, su, ga, mo, gomneti, da, kuma, wada nda, sukai, za, ba, mon, kau, musu, mon, azam, sukiwa, ga, bukatu, mutani, wu, uh, don, ayu, kari, abeyam, su, wada, ndu, bukatu.
Bayon wali, one, na, mta, aki, za, kura?
Za, murika, sa, edu, murika, mumbas, wukumusu, alakoli, za, su, aki, akai, su, za, murika, sa, edu, mukayeta, ayu, kamsuketa, he, insha Allah.